I'd like to call on this meeting for the variation order for uh seven oh one. Uh variation order for one oh nine dash two 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 twenty six with three April. For September the twenty sixth to that. We have supporting material for variation order number one zero zero nine dash two 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 twenty six mystery lake road dot one. Pail eight nine six six peel peel north vision. For the construction of an advertising sign built with the sign surface area exceeding one hundred and eight square. Feet square to two hundred feet square in a public institutional zone F one. Administration.
Yeah, good evening. Madison O'Driscoll, I'm retiring. It's been a application requesting a variation. For the face sign and advertising sign, our current zoning bylaws allow ads. It allows signs up to one hundred and seven sort of one hundred and eight square feet. Uh this proposed sign is two hundred feet. Uh as per the planning act, notice of this public hearing has been certigated to all hundred meters as well as to utilities. Hydro, STCO, MTS, Shockable, and Thompson Park services. And to date, uh no objections for uh against this variance have been received, uh and this is the public hearing for that as I require.
Yeah, so this time it's the public's opportunity to make representations in support or to object. Uh normally, the people who are in support will start off first, and I believe we have the proponent here in the room. Uh who would like to make that presentation to the public council.
Good evening.
Okay.
Step forward, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Jeff Pynchon for everybody's information.
Nice to meet everybody. Well, skip through some and try to be quick as I have presented before and I realize there's a time limit. But, good evening, your worship, honorable members of city council, esteemed members of the city administration, and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposal for a digital advertising partnership with the city of Thompson. I'm Jeff Pynchon, leasing manager of Madison for advertising gear in Manitoba, and I'm in favor of this variance and support it here tonight. I know many of you have already seen this presentation before, solve it, briefly skip through it, and then focus on road safety. As I've been told, a few questions and concerns have arisen about road safety. And I'd like to address them directly to dispel any misinformation about the proposed project and help only gauge any concerns. You can skip ahead to slide six. A lot of this I did present already a few weeks ago, so in the essence of time. This partnership proposal will offer the city of Thompson the use of the digital advertising screening proposed here for their own municipal messaging and announcements. While generating passive revenue for the city with zero cost to community. It is currently in the location just right to a of a sign that is currently there permitted by the city. And a temporary advertising sign, and I believe it says jobs on it right now and has some information. Even our sign would just be located to the right of that that current advertising sign. You can skip ahead one one slide please. That would be the corner. That would just be the corner that could be located at facing Thompson Drive and Mystery Lake Road. Next slide please. The picture here is a um is an actual picture of a partnership that we have with the city advertising partnership. Uh with the city of Chestermere, Alberta, very similar to what I'm looking today. Then this is an actual picture, one of their major intersections in their community. They are a city of about nineteen thousand. Oh. Thanks. They were serious about me standing there. From the size of the sign and dimensions would be roughly the same. To the next slide. Now for the moment, everybody's been waiting. Digital sign safety and roads. As Canada's leader in out-of-home advertising, Pat Snoper Advertising is extremely committed to road safety. Riding a safe outdoor advertising medium to every community we serve. I'll start with some technical features of our signs, then jump to some facts and studies, and even some suggested Canadian guidelines. First, our digital signs have no animation, video, or moving plot. There are static advertisements that appear in a series like a slideshow or like this PowerPoint presentation. There's no flashing, no scintillating images, and no transitional effects between advertisements. So advertisements don't dissolve or fly off the screen. These features are proven to limit driver distraction and are actually required by bylaw in most metropolitan cities and across Canada. Another safety feature of these signs is the ambient light sensor and automatic dimming technology. That adjusts screen brightness to suit the conditions. So at night or during a cloudy day, the display will actually dim to match the ambient lighting conditions. These screens are also monitored in real-time from Winnipeg and our digital operations center in Mississauga. So the technicians can be dispatched immediately in the case of a technical glitch. Next slide please. The operations center can either remotely correct a display deficiency or deploy a local technician to assign where necessary. And that is important because we do plan on hiring somebody local that can do the maintenance of the sign. Parts are also stored on-site for local technicians to uh to complete repairs quickly. Ads are sent to the sign via a secure encrypted feed and all advertising adheres to Advertising Standards Canada Canadian Code of Advertising Standards. Next slide please. One final safety feature of our digital signs is smart ad technology. The same technology that we are offering to the city of Thompson to broadcast your municipal messages and announcements can be used in the case of an emergency. Smart ad technology means city messages can be changed remote on short notice. And different messages can be scheduled for different times of the day or different days of the week. We are also N A A D alert ready capable, which supports the Canadian Centre for Child Protection Amber Alert Program. That means the Canadian Centre for Child Protection has the ability to override ads and display amber alerts in real-time during a crisis, which is an amenity for any community. Go to that picture label cone of visions. The the picture. Now let's look at some scientific facts and research conducted on digital advertising billboards and road safety. Because I'll be honest, before I read the research and looked at the facts, I had my own concerns. I didn't know how digital billboard could be safe for problems. And I'm sure some of you here tonight might be thinking the same thing even now. But after years of research, the science confirms no negative adverse effects are caused to road safety. By the presence of the digital advertising sign operating rapidly. With all due respect, I want to provide some example guidelines and research studies used in other Canadian jurisdictions regarding the placement and operation of digital advertising signs. That could be used in Thompson to help determine regulations and road safety. I know this is a really, really exciting topic, but uh currently, the Transportation Association of Canada, or TAC. Um digital and projected advertising display regulatory and road safety assessment guidelines is the most recent study in Canada. Intended to assist municipalities with digital advertising sign applications. So this fine document here was sent out uh to to council on Friday, September second. With a link to this and some other attachments that you'll find in in the packages on on the desk in front of you. Uh meanwhile, Lyle was also kind enough to to send out the same documents as well. Uh the reason why we returned to the Transportation Association of Canada is we approached management infrastructure. Uh both personally and the city administration to see their opinion on this project. And unfortunately, because it falls outside of their jurisdiction, uh they would not give their opinion and they turned it back to the the city of Thompson. Um and without the currently without any digital bylaw regulations on on the signs. I kind of thought if I could take some more stricter bylaws from around the country and from around Manitoba. And and show what they may be and and how we would fit in even in those environments, that this would show this the safety and the appropriateness of of this location and this project here tonight. So, in in March of two thousand fifteen, the Transportation Association of Canada, TAC, published these guidelines here. The digital and projected advertising display or E-PAD road safety. These guidelines are intended to assist jurisdictions developing their own digital advertising regulations, evaluating digital advertising sign permit applications. And assessing their potential road safety impact. They are applicable to all road types and are specific to road safety. I have provided some attachments on the left-hand side of the packages for you. Uh if you could please go to the PDF slide number one there. That'll come up there. The TAC guideline provides a recommend the record methodology for the placement of digital advertising signs that are obtained through drivers' horizontal cone of vision. The assessment is based upon the accepted industry standard of varying cone of vision, depending on the maximum adequate lateral vision with ten-degree cone representing good lateral vision. And forty degrees split twenty and twenty both sides representing adequate lateral break. Placement of a sign within this cone means that a driver's time at an orbit is reduced. Creating smaller time period of when driver's eyes will not be on the road and thus not negatively impacting traffic safety. After reviewing the projected location of our proposed digital advertising billboard at the corner of two two six Mystery Lake Road. We've concluded their proposed digital advertising sign is located within the cone of vision requirement stated in the TAC guideline. So if you see, if you see the cone right there and roadway, we'd be located right in there. And as the highlight section shows, these guidelines favor placing E-Pads or digital advertising signs within that cone of vision. Please go to the next slide conclusion. The next slide, sorry. I'm sorry, the next PDF, uh number two conclusion. Just just down, there you go, just the highlight section, thank you. Uh the TAC guideline also states their conclusion in section two point one point four as the following. Despite years of research, there have been no definitive conclusions about the presence or strength of adverse safety effects of deep ads. Digital advertising screens measured by increased collision frequency, so no additional accidents caused by these type of signs. Proven through scientific fact. Please go to the next study, digital billboard safety confirmed. Some of the research reflected by TAC includes a study of numerous locations and digital advertising billboards between two thousand seven and two thousand ten. Determined their impact and published in an article titled Digital Billboard Safety Confirmed. With the conclusion that the rate of accidents did not increase in proximity to digital advertising billboards. And that that study is also on on your left-hand side. The highlighted section shows that the study looked at more than a hundred and sixty thousand accident records in proximity to sixty-nine digital billboard bases. And the billboards varied in size and location, including interstates, expressways, and local roadways. And statistically, it there is no significant relationship between accidents and buildings. The next study on your left, yeah, if you could please go to the uh. The digital billboard can improve driver behavior. One of the most recent research studies comes from Australia, two thousand eighteen, by the Australian Road Research. Where they actually found that driver behavior showed slight signs of improvement when a digital advertising board was installed in a little inch. While the improvements noted were slight, the study did confirm that there was no measurable decrease in road safety. And that studies on your left there, and the highlighted section show that researchers observed that lane drift either improved or was unaffected. Stopping near the line improved in all but one instance, and no crashes occurred. The study showed that it is possible for a digital sign at an intersection to offer no negative impact on driver performance and even in some cases to improve it. Now, I'm not going to go and say that this one, the sign will make roads safer, but management public insurance does use these signs across Manitoba. For their anti-driver distraction campaigns and other driver safety programs.
So just twelve minutes, I'll give you another two minutes.
Sure, I'll I'll wrap it up right away.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. Uh to use one final natural example, the city of Winnipeg, and I know that that is not here, but it does have a very strict sign by law. Which requires different digital advertising billboards to follow specific operational guidelines pertaining to brightness, automatic dimming, controls, ambient light sensors. Distance from other billboards, six-second hold times, and no transitional effect between images, and no moving or animated darkness, all to enforce road safety. I can probably say that we follow all of these aspects with our sign. Uh the city of Winnipeg also follows rules for intersection with traffic signals. You could just quickly show that a traffic signal intersection line there. As you can see where the uh blue blue X is versus orange trend is, if you were to apply the city of Winnipeg by law to it. You would actually fall outside of the restricted zone, thus being in a safe operational standards for the driver and just driver decision area like an intersection. Uh if you flip to the to the next, just the bottom of that, it's a ten-page. This is a rough, rough survey of Thompson Drive and Mystery Lake Road. Uh and once again, the proposed area of the sign is in the X and the orange areas, if that that strict decision-making area by law was applied, you would fall outside of it. So just to summarize, if you could go back to the PowerPoint presentation, third last slide please. Thank you. Summarize, we're offering an advertising spot for city messaging and announcements on the sign. Aim it of a monthly lease fee to the city over a ten-year term. Access to Patterson smart ad technology for the city to manage its messaging and announcements. Special architectural plating of the sign structure customized for the city of Thompson and featuring an illuminated city logo. A complete turnkey signage and messaging solution for the city, as Patterson handles all aspects of build and operation. Patterson also pays for all costs, uh including ongoing maintenance and hyperpower. And there would be no cost to the city of Thompson ever whatsoever. In conclusion, we're in favor of this variance and extremely excited to partner with the city of Thompson at two two six Mystery Lake Road. On our first advertising sign within the city. We respectfully believe that we have shown multiple facts and scientific studies proving road safety of our digital advertising billboards. And hopefully dispelling any myths about the technology. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will receive other.
Thank you, but I'm here.
Can I ask a question?
Clarification.
Sorry, Jeff, right?
Yes, thanks for coming.
My question is, would you consider a different location?
Uh that was that was brought up before, and as much as I never want to say it's it's there's only one answer. The traffic counts for the city of Thompson um are only documented.
Traffic access.
No, no, and it's for a specific reason that it's doing the only intersection with high traffic.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming, Jeff.
Thank you.
First one. You said that there's lots in Manitoba, like different cities. Is there one on city?
In Manitoba?
Yes.
Uh not that I know of. The one in Chestermere, Alberta is on their city property. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh thank you for coming, Jeff. Appreciate it. Uh again, by the way. Uh I'm all the concerns I had and I raised with you before was prospective damage on that piece of property. Turnaround time to repair. Um in addition to that, which you mentioned, you know, we're accommodating at least before. I'm worried or I'm wondering if you see what the ability to shut the power off to that uh infrastructure should. The damage on there actually be distracted. So you've got, you know, dimming technology and uh. The thing is set up to be as distract non-distracting as possible. But should you have some type of uh event there or damage to it where it's not based anymore that should city have the ability to shut it down?
Uh it would probably be through manageable hydro, if it was a safety factor. We have the ability to remotely shut it down if there was uh damage to it like.
And I assume we'd do so after the last.
Yeah, a- as I was mentioning, I believe in our last conversation, even one second within uh operating incorrectly. Um is some of the situation we would want to be, and that's why we have this this safety of the market involved in this.
Thank you. Further comments, questions?
If I could add a further clarification uh to to your question, we have many uh billboard signs on city property, just not city home. So many city Winnipeg, city Brandon, uh the city of Flynn Lawn, city Paw, uh we we do have many billboard on their farm.
Thank you. Uh seeing no more questions, so thank you.
Very much. Appreciate your time.
I would now knowledge anyone else that has any more presentation to support about the signs. One more time, anybody that wants to make a presentation and support. Okay, I will now ask if anybody wants to make a presentation objecting to the sign.
Ron Natachuk, twenty Ash Street. I've been driving professionally in Thompson for four and a half decades. I think I know the. Not only the the roads of Thompson pretty good, but the habits of the drivers in Thompson. And a lot of them cannot afford to be distracted as. As everybody knows, that is the busiest intersection in Thompson. That is why they are out there. I think it would be a distraction for many drivers. We know in the last few years, we even had ambulances. I involved in accidents at that intersection. I. That's as far as the distraction thing goes. Next, that is McLean Park. We pumped a fair bit of money into McLean Park. Making this area look a little better, and that does nothing to enhance the appearance of the same park. I am against it.
Okay. Um any other? Presentations for objections?
One more thing. Also, the example given in Alberta, if you look at the background of that, that uh. Area, that was a prong pond. It was in front of, not our city's park.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to just speak?
Yes, I want to ask a question last week's meeting.
Please state your name for the.
Oh, my name is Eddie Cooper. And last week I was at the meeting and I believe I heard there was eight hundred plus or.
This uh is this for this?
This is currently only on this topic. There will be another.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Seeing no more uh questions uh and uh supporter objections or calls for adjournment. Also, Cooper, or else word, all favor, very much. That's for going to win for regular meeting of council. For September the twenty-sixth, and it is seven twenty-three P M. I would like to say we have regrets from Deputy Mayor Lamarc for this meeting. I would also like to recognize that we're on treaty five land. Traditional land of the Jewish way to pre-nation and homeland of the making and that we are open. Expect that approval with the agenda. Council.
I would like to add, if possible, on there.
Okay, we have to keep that all agree.
Yeah, that's our agrees. Uh I believe given that we're going into an election, it would be wise to let the public know about the new estimate with your rest of the pool. I'd like to discuss that with council today.
Discuss what?
Releasing of the new estimate for the pool.
Yeah, um that would, I think, should go to the committee of the whole first president directed council meeting. My corrector in for Anthony.
We'll make it added to the next committee of overall. That'd be fine, whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Again, I'll ask for approval of the agenda. Council Valentino, Council McMurdo, all those in favor. Here. Now it's time for community comments and feedback.
Sorry.
Yes.
Last week, there were a number of questions, so we'll say we're bringing the answers back. Um there's a question about the city reserves. Um according to the audit itself, financials at the end of twenty twenty-one, um audited twenty-two million, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and nineteen. And in the twenty twenty-two budget, the city had budgeted to spend nine million, eight hundred and fifty-four, five hundred from the reserves. There was a question about check number three, four, eight, seven, five. Um for boss auto, that was a combination of three invoices. One is referred to repair of transit bus. Installing a compressor, other repairs, solenoid, and check engine leads. The other one was for a transit bus as well, a different one, uh repair was front brakes. And the third was for vibration diagnosis and a new injector connector. Um there's a question about check three, four, eight, eight, four for Joe Johnson. Was a single invoice that was five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty for the purchase of a hydro bath. Which had a bit of proved resolution by council um for five hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred plus taxes. Um due to additional discounts negotiated for lease payments, the final four five hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen plus applicable taxes. There's a question about check three, four, nine, one, nine. That is uh M L T Akins, which is legal counsel. That will be reviewed by city council in camera at the next meeting.
Thank you. I will hold the community for their comments.
Ron Natachuk, twenty Ash. Uh another question I asked at the last meeting was the cost estimate on the new aquatic center. Uh can you tell me, other than the upcoming municipal election, is there anything that would cause it be take to be taken as a sensitive issue? Where it can be revealed?
I'm gonna take my direction from council on that, so your council will give me direction on when to bring it up for.
So if you're giving the direction, then it will be on the next agenda?
I would follow council's direction on.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Good evening. My name is Eddie Cooper, forty-eight Greshberg, Thompson Drive. Um I have a question about the last week's meeting and the police report. I believe there was a report made that over eight hundred. Bottles of liquor was thrown on the ground, taken from the table downtown area. Correct me if wrong, but if I'm right, that couldn't that be an environmental spill? If I come into town and I don't access, but like seventy, eight hundred bottles spilled on the street. Wouldn't that become the environmental spill? Would you have to clean it up? And if that's the case, where are the tickets for those people that are drinking in public and being a nuisance? Where to find under our bylaw?
Thank you, sir.
With respect to the environment act, I wouldn't have an answer on that. I'd have to refer to an environmental officer, so I can't answer that. Um at the moment, my discussions with the department on why dumping versus ticketing is the department has seen more. And I believe this is what the R C P said as well, that there's more advantage of dumping that liquor and preventing its consumption, rather than writing a ticket that would be very hard to collect. So that's them weighing out the time cost benefit analysis from their perspective. But of course, whatever council's will is in terms of the direction they want to go is up to up to council. So I've been advised that I can take from ten to thirty minutes to write a ticket, whereas dumping a bottle of liquor very quick. And it takes over reach to prevent issues later on in that evening. So that's the explanation I would do. Thank you.
Okay. And the other comments, questions for community feedback? Last time, any more comments from community feedback? Thank you. Saying none, we will move on. Number five, adoption minutes, five point one is very minute, the variation order, one zero zero eight dash two two, September the twelfth. Two thousand eighty-two. Resolution to zero two two one six eight, moved by councillor Wong, seconded by councillor Prue. Dear result, at the minutes of the public hearing, the variation order number one zero zero eight dash two two, held in council chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba. A Monday, September the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted as circulated administration.
Not approved.
Councillor Wong. Any other comments from council? Hope for the fresh and all those in favor. Here. Five point two is the adoption minutes for the regular meeting of council, September the twelfth, two thousand. Resolution to zero two two one six nine, moved by councillor Prue, seconded by councillor McMurdo. Dear result, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in council, chamber, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, September twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted as circulated administration. Councillor Prue. Open question, all those in favor? Here. Five point three, adoption of minutes for the committee of the whole, September the nineteenth, two thousand. Resolution two zero two two one seven zero, moved by councillor Prue, seconded by councillor McMurdo. Dear result, at the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, the council held in council, Cambridge, city hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, be adopted as circulated. Administration.
Nothing further.
Councillor Prue.
Moving through.
Uh rest of council. Open question, all those in favor? Here. Next, we're gonna go into resolutions. Resolution six point one is a resolution to approve variation order one zero zero nine dash two 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 twenty-six mystery lake road. Resolution two, zero, two, two, one, seven, one, moved by Council Wong, seconded by Council approved. Whereas the city in Thompson is in receipt of a variation order application number, one, zero, zero, nine, dash, two, 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 twenty six, mystery. Bought one plan, eight, nine, six, six, P L K, Mark Division for the following, construction of an advertising sign bill with the sign surface. Area exceeding a hundred and eighty feet squared to two hundred feet squared in a public institutional zone, B one. And whereas, under the provisions of the planning act, a public hearing has been held to hear representations for and or against the order. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council approved variation order number, one, zero, zero, nine, dash, two, 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 twenty six, mystery lake road, subject to the approval. Of the property lease agreement with Patterson Outdoor Advertise LP. Administration.
Yes, indeed. Uh, yes, passing up for advertising has submitted this variation again with sign increase for two hundred square feet. Our current bylaw states one hundred feet square foot max. As per the planning act, uh, the notice variation was closer than property and sent to all property owners within one hundred meters. Uh, there was also a public hearing held this evening. Uh, utilities were all notified prior. There were no uh, no objections pursued. Added to the public hearing tonight, there was one party and one party.
Okay. Uh, who comes to walk?
You may have a view. See, I've Thompson need to have something to decide it, but. When I look at the scenario, I will get the whole location. Uh, I will be concerned. But I'm not going to spend too much time to debate on this particular resolution because I'm going to use the time. To go to the rear. And we are talking the resolution for later on to debate. And with this, I'm just the last one. Thank you.
Thank you. Other cops?
Thank you, uh, mayor's certification, first of all. On six point one, if that does not pass, then we don't go to six point three. I don't think we are, we're still going to.
But it, there's a tech, yeah, there's a technicality there that if you don't approve the variation, then you can't really enter into a lease agreement because the lease would require that to be in place.
Thank you. Like to continue. I think it's, it's exciting that we have a company coming to announce wanting to do this. Let's be clear about that. That's not my issue. When we first said the presentation, there was a number of questions being asked of the safety. We have a fire department, we have a police department, we have others, we have the public that have stated in the past, there's been issues with that area. I would have hoped tonight that Patterson would have been inclined to possibly. Uh, look at relocation. I really would have, because I think you're missing that a, 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 a wonderful opportunity. I spent my lifetime negotiating. When you get no from the first time. That kind of doesn't resonate very good to me because there's got to be some movement in everything we do in life. It's absolutely no, I mean, you can't move in anything. Based on, and I asked if there was anything different than the first presentation I've seen in regards to the safety aspect. I'm told no. It's got ninety of the presentation Patterson is putting forward. It's got to do with the data that we received from the stakeholders and council. Therefore, I could not support, would not support, regrettably, uh, doing this sign in that location. Would I be open to Patterson looking at it? Not absolutely. I think it's a great opportunity, and sir, I would, if I could to the mayor, I would suggest to you, don't give up on Thompson. Go back and have another look at, is there a possible location that you may not get everything you wanted, but you still get a lot. Thompson is five minutes right. Let's be clear with that. From anywhere, anyone living there, someone already with six. But it's, it's very close anywhere. So adding that that exact location, I don't think you. You're going to lose that much if you consider somewhere where it might be being more safer. Uh, I know you can't speak back to me. I'm, I'm addressing this. Um, I see, see your body language, getting a little shared. Um, so, so Madam Mayor, be- because of what has been presented. To me personally, as a counselor, I don't see anything different than the first time. If the police entity came back or the fire department or somebody else said, you know what, based on what Patterson had now said. I think we can work with that. Then I might have been able to change, you know, you may have been able to change my mind. I represent the people of Thompson. I, I also, uh, as an elected official, I have to believe in our people that we. Uh, certainly I think the place, the police, the fire department, the city administration, therefore, and again, regrettably. I will not be in what they were moving forward. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, and thanks, that's energy for your presentation, sir. Um, I, I might have missed the opportunity to jump in. Um, because I have a couple of issues with the contract itself, uh, specifically, I think it's line ten. Where, um, it states that if Patterson determines that.
The kind of word, Madam Mayor. You have to deal with what we're dealing with now, not the contract.
Yeah, this is just the first.
Okay, well, I won't be supporting that, then I won't have option to speak with them.
You can still speak about what you feel about the signs, just not the actual contract, if there's other concern with things that you want to bring up, pause against.
Um, yeah, I have some issues with the contract, and if there's an inappropriate time, then I'm not speaker.
Thank you, sir. Country.
Just to clarify, the contract is under six point two. So it'll have its own separate.
Um, Foster.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I too had safety issues. Um, the beginning of this, um, and certainly, yeah, I appreciate, uh. Mister Pynchon's presentation. Uh, many of us will probably remember, uh, the great Mark Twain's comments, most statistics. Others lies, that lies, statistics in this world, and you gotta take any of that type of number with a. Uh, grain of salt. That said, I did some thought. Um, and some research on this driving around Thompson. Uh, looking at what we have currently, uh, some of our more dangerous areas in front of the high school for that matter. In front of the public library where there's quite a bit of. Pedestrian traffic to say the least. Uh, in all of those locations, we have similar type signage. And if there's anything that's going to distract a guy like me, it would be an A M W hamburger. And I've, I've never had a situation where those flashy teen burgers have led me astray, um, driving wise. Uh, I think it would be wise to, uh. Give this a chance. Uh, I'll be supporting it. And, uh, I hope that if we do see incidents rise, that we can prove conclusively. Um, that, uh, you would be able to have a sit down again with pension and have that discussion. Or sorry, Patterson, sorry, or and have that discussion, but for my part, I'm glad to support it, let's see what happens.
Thank you. Come for a round here?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Um, I'm going to be supporting the variation order. For this resolution, I did have safety concerns. I feel you definitely, um. Provided the answers to that, the data and the sign in and the location for this resolution to move this forward, the, the discussion of the supportings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Um, I also have gone at, uh. Done this intersection over and over at busy times and that just to sort of, uh, see what the aspect of that and I have seen, uh, basically. Will maybe have somebody sitting at the intersection. Controlling traffic that isn't paying attention as it is. I, um, have had concerns right from the beginning about the, the. Location of the sign and had talked to some R C F members. I see in saying that, I see our Thompson Fire and Emergency Services. Uh, did not have concern, although I do when I watch that, uh, going through that, uh, red lights and that quite often where people are stopping. So, uh, with that, uh. I personally won't be supporting this sign, and if there's no more questions, we'll call for the question.
Can I do the closing things?
Okay.
Since we've tried to get this rush going, so I might show you why I debate there. I received two letter from the public regarding this time. And we'll read it out. One is to me, Mr. Wong. The intersection is not a place for a sign to go. It is a high risk area. There is like. There that you meant to watch, look at when you enter town and by the bridge. You cops and.
Okay, and I think.
Those should have been.
Been presented.
Part of the variation. Then they would have been on record as the.
Cause now it's only as council.
After that, no one's allowed to make representation on. The letter should have been submitted.
You mean to the last time and the debate, you bring up a bunch of letter and talk, you read about it?
That was during the variation hearing.
Okay, but that's fine. That's fine. I don't have to read it. I don't have to read it.
That's where they did put onto the record.
Okay, but then another letter is from the, uh, former superintendent from A M I T, also concerned about the sign. So right now, my, my position is, when I look at the safety. I will not be the one to put the vote and, and approve this law, uh, sign in the future if that is. The intersection that costs one life is on those people, not me. And also, we also consult with the A M I T department. They came, I say it's not a good location. I will not throw them under the bus. Because they come and tell us why, and it's not a good location. So imagine in the future, if we ask them any opinion. They might not cooperate with us anymore. So with that reason, I will not support the sign. As I earlier, I, I asked the company, would they? Consider out of location, I'm giving the authority to do that. So the answer was not, no. So thank you, Madam.
Thank you. And she were closing remarks with all for the question.
I'm there. Calling for a report, both unless it's already for.
Recorder goal, just please, okay? Uh, as per request of Council of all, here, this will be our recording vote. All those in favor of design? Council problem, Council Valentin. Opposed? Council approved, Council Wong, Nurse Smith, Council Ellsworth, Council McMurdo, Council. Six point two. Is a motion to lift from the tables. Resolution number two, zero, two, two, one, five, zero, being a resolution authorizing administration to enter into a property lease agreement. Between the city of Thompson and Patterson.
Enlightened the bulk council just took, um, I have a record and that this motion. Not be brought forward and leave the item tabled. And if another counselor in the future wants to bring this motion back, they can always move to receive.
Okay, thank you.
So that would mean that there'd be no six point two.
Six point three or. Also a six point three? Yeah, it's everybody in agreement?
This is required, basically, remain on the table with both setting that they bring back.
We just bring it forward and vote it down. It's, it's council decision. Okay, I, I just wondered, but it's already tabled, rules if it can remain table and definitely.
Yeah, I mean, it's a publication. They got your time being potatoed in there. When you bring it up. You know, before I would, right?
That's probably the means of how to.
So I'll be looking. Well, I've been ready for it and.
Bring forward now?
Yeah.
About the agreement is about Joel ass. Bring the phone now. Okay, thank you. Six point two, a motion to lift from the table, resolution two, zero, two, two, one, fifty, being a resolution authorizing. Administration to enter into a property lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Patterson. Resolution is zero, two, two, one, five, zero, moved by Council Wong, seconded by Council Culver. Here it results, the council authorized the administration to enter into a property lease agreement between the city of Thompson and Patterson, oh, Lord. After that. I'm Tommy, sorry. I'm just wondering if we can move back to that on the table. Okay. Second. Moved by Council about set by Council, and we're all those in favor? Here. Administration, any comments on the resolution?
Um. Nothing further.
Council Wong. And. Open the question, all those in favor?
To leave the presentation then. To leave the.
No, we did the table, we've.
It's, it's already been lifted. It's on the table now, so it's a main resolution, possibly agreed.
Main resolution, that's what I asked.
Sorry.
That's why I asked.
Why?
Can you do it all the comments?
No, it would be the same as, uh, earlier. I will not support this.
Okay. Also, McMurdo.
Um, I, I have some concerns with some aspects of the contract, which I think would be a little bit redundant now to get into, so, yeah.
Okay. Council forward.
Well, I have problems with. Right, uh, from where. One problem I got with it. Well, that's for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council group?
Um, same thing. But I'm. Uh, in favor of the sign and not the location. So for that, I. The resolution.
Thank you. Council call.
Well, as we're not swinging it, if I'm going to go down. The two most famous intersections in this world that have the busiest populations at the. Shinjiu station to Tokyo and Times Square in New York are lit up with billboards all across them. There's not, uh, a single person that would argue that those are more dangerous because of those signs. Otherwise, they would be there during the amount of people that use those. I believe it's unfortunate we've gone this direction, but, uh, I am pleased to see somewhat of a independent vote for a change here at council.
Thank you. Saying no more questions, open the question, all those in favor? Post? Did not have. Okay. That does make, uh, six point three.
That was six point two.
Okay, we'll move on to six point four, a resolution to approve taxes out. Resolution to zero, two, two, one, seven, two, moved by Council Valentino, seconded by Council McMurdo. Whereas section three, twenty six, one of the municipal act. Provides authority for municipality to correct its tax role in respect of a property. And impose supplementary taxes if after the tax rule has been completed, the assessor reports to the municipality that, A. The property is liable to taxation, that's what it says. B, the property is liable to taxation due to a change in owner for use. C, the assessment of an improvement. Of, on the property requires an increase due to a change in the physical condition of the improvement. D, a change has been made in the classification of the property under Municipal Assessment Act. Or a regulation under that act, or E, the land has been improved or subdivided. Now, therefore, be it resolved that council authorized the chief financial officer to make additions to the two thousand and two real property tax rule. As certified by the assessor, and the addition to the tax rules attached here to, as per appendix. A R two, dash, twenty two, and A B two, dash. Twenty. Administration.
This is a regular housekeeping sort of resolution that comes forth in time to time. As council will note, there's a number of additions to the tax rule. Administration would recommend, uh, let the council pass this by resolution, then it will be followed with the businesses and properties that are sold, and those would be taxes canceled as the next.
Thank you. Call for Valentino?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. I just, um, I think that this is actually, when you look at the second attachment with the taxes added for businesses. It goes from August of twenty twenty one to, to most, I guess, recent. Um, and I think it's worth knowing that when I added, there was about fourteen new businesses that were added. I think that's a good news story for Thompson, and I would just ask, uh, in the future, whenever that could be. Administration or the finance department could give us a real dollar amount for the change that taxes on, once you get the assessment done. Thank you. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other comments, Constance? Seeing now, all the questions, all those in favor? Six point five. It's a resolution to approve tax camp. Resolution two zero two two one seven three, moved by a council McMyrtle, second by Councilor Donald Keen. Here resolve that pursuant to the authority provided in section three hundred and six point one of the municipal act. Council hereby authorizes cancellation of taxes here to as appendix B two twenty two and two twenty two. Administration.
Yeah, so as previously mentioned, this is prepared by the Municipal Assessments Branch. Um, council or administration recommend that council pass the resolution, as a member of these businesses wanted to close or shut.
Thank you. And Councilman Hurdle, any comment?
Um, not not much to add at all, it's always disappointing to see, uh, businesses close, but I'll probably support in this.
Thank you, any other council comments? Let's go on.
Maybe maybe we look at the chart, uh, it's quite a bit of business, both a move, so this concerned me anyhow. Uh, we have to take that out of the book, so I will support this, thank you.
Thank you. Also.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and you will notice on the the previous resolution, some of these are over there because the location changed, not necessarily new business. And the second one I'm going to make, maybe if we had not charged the increased taxes, but we had money from the government in the last budget. Uh, some of those may still be here, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? Seeing none, hope for the question, all those in favor. Here. Six point six, a resolution to approve waiving the fees for the New Orleans celebration. Resolution two zero two two one seven four, moved by Councilor Valentine, second by Councilor Pro. Whereas the ongoing organizing committee of for the New Orleans celebration has requested that the city of Thompson waive the rental cost of four eight hundred and eighty five dollars. And ten cents for the Bill Masky Wellness Center for the New Orleans Celebration on October first, second, and twenty third. Twenty twenty two, and whereas council reviewed the request of the committee of the whole meeting. And deems it to be in the best interest of the community, under an agreement that the requested fees be waived. Now therefore, dear result that council waived the fees for the Bill Masky Wellness Center for the New Orleans Celebration. At a cost not to exceed four hundred and eighty five dollars in excess, Miss Rachel.
So, um, this is brought forward because it was within the sixty day notice period, uh, which requires council then to approve the waiving of these fees. Um, it's a request from the Duall group that has not been able to celebrate for the last few years, so, uh. Committee of the whole last week recommended to be brought forward for a resolution.
Thank you, Councilor Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak, I'll be supporting as it's worth noting that they currently do have a credit on their account of almost eight hundred dollars from the last time that was canceled. So the waving of the fees for the four eighty five to ten, I'll be supporting, this is a great, uh. Event of celebration that this year does in Thompson. Um, and I know that there was some other issues we discussed at committee, the whole and working with them. With some of the outstanding issues regarding their feast or their, um. Stuff that they put on, so I'm just hoping that we have done our due diligence to work with them to ensure their event is a success, and I'll be supporting this, thank you.
Thank you, other call, also for all spring.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um. Councilor Valentine has always brought forward, but I didn't want the public to think that it was only four and eighty five ten, it is twelve seventy nine ninety eight, the cost of the rental. This was after credit was before eighty five ten, I also conclude it's a, it's a great event I've attended in the the past, you're you're well respected, well received. And I would encourage all counselors that have been invited to please go and support them, it's been three years since they've had the opportunity to do this, and certainly I will be on myself, thank you.
Thanks, any other comments? Councilor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mia, I was just wondering, the last committee, oh, we have the discussion about this, about the, I mean, are we taking care of their priority, I don't think it's our. Our responsibility to present, uh, to ask, right? Piece of.
That is provincial legislation, that does not, uh, it's not a city requirement, that's provincial part.
So, yeah, continue, so is that mean, so this, this event will still happen, it's it's not going to stop them to to live that. Continue the event with the piece of document, right?
That would be for the city to, uh, that would be for the organizers to go to France and and look at those.
So city got nothing to do with it.
That's correct.
Thank you, that's all, thank you.
Just a point of information, the the event has already been advertised, I have no sense today, they are going forward. Whatever that means, the schedule, I'll go first and say, thank you.
Thank you, uh, I too have attended this event in the past, and it's for recognition for the for the community and that. And, uh, everybody is invited when it gets on, so, uh, please, uh, for we do a can, Councilor Ford.
Uh, I'll be sort of warning this, but I am concerned about all the, uh, the, uh. Waving of the fees that they were. For the director, sorry, because direct center is one of the things that costs this city most money. So I'm very concerned about all this waving of fees, but I will support it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more comments? Seeing none, all for the question, all those in favor. Close. Carrie. Six point seven is resolution appointing measures to the two thousand twenty three Board of Revision. Resolution two zero two two one seven five, moved by Councilor Valentine, second by Councilor McColon. Be it resolved that the following members of council are hereby appointed to the border revision. Of the city of Thompson for twenty twenty three. We have Deputy Mayor Gunmark, Councilor Ellsworth, and Councilor Coleman. And further be it resolved that I need one of the names is hereby appointed as chairperson of the board. Councilor Alfred.
Adam Mayor, it gives me great honor to, uh, recommend Council on Mark, since he's not out there, it'll be great, then he will be the chairperson, so thank you.
Okay, can we do that without him in?
Absolutely.
I think.
I sure be happy. Thanks.
And be it further is though that Deputy Mayor Lundmark is hereby appointed as chairperson of the board. And be it further is though that Tommy Probert, second assistant, be hereby appointed a secretary of. Administration.
Um, just to note that this, uh, border revision is a requirement under municipal act, it's a place where people can come. And appeal the assessment of their properties in front of the board, I mean, members council. Um, so it is, uh, should it be held on October sixth.
Thank you. Okay, um, Councilor Donald Keen, do you have any comments? He is the mover, he was, uh. Hey, Councilor.
Yeah, I just would like to, again, send our regrets and apologize, counsel for not being able to. Uh, sit on this mesmerizing committee, um, it isn't mesmerizing for sure, but I do have a work commitment to, uh, you have to pay my bills, so. Unable to attend, my apologies, it's here.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Seeing none, hope for the question, all wholesome favor. Carrie. Thank you, and just as we're, uh, coming to the end of the meeting, I'd like to recognize that this is the week where a spirit of reconciliation. We take, uh, remember our missing murdered indigenous women and our children. That have gone missing, even residential school survivors, so there's many activities between the city and the different indigenous organizations, and I would definitely. Uh, ask that council and the community take part in the recognition of this, thank you, with that, we'll call for your. Uh, Councilor Valentine or Councilor Wong, all favor, Carrie, thank you. Anything?